Calling this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Can I please have a roll call?
Here. Present. Present.
Here.
Here.
My baron stepped out to the bathroom, but he is here too. Motion to excuse.
Motion to excuse those not present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance, let's stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As it notes here, it says election of officers, and then A, election of chair, B, election of vice-chair. We don't have all the people present, that's correct.
Motion to table that at the next meeting.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 19, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, now moving on to review and consideration of the following master plan. I read. A, review of the revision of the D and J Alexander subdivision master plan. The intent is commercial and residential. The purpose of this revision is to amend the land use in the identification of Lot 2, Block 2, Alexander Commercial subdivision, Phase 13, from detention pond to commercial.
Yes, for the record, the applicant is D and J Alexander Management, engineers Premier Engineering serving, proposed use as residential and commercial. Zoning for this master plan development is R1, R1, uh, R2, B3, and B4. The location view. Aerial view. The revised master plan. Staff comments planning. And the proposed motion.
Madam Chair, question for staff.
Yes.
In the master plan, what are the plans for the, for the stormwater runoff? What happens now that the detention pond becomes a commercial track?
So Engineering Department, we did meet with them and they did review the, the stormwater calculations for that and they said that it was appropriate, or it would be accommodated in the adjacent lot.
It would meet the specifications.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, subject to the comments.
I had a quick question before we do that. So I'm assuming, the area we're talking about, I just want clarification on where this, um, this change is happening, which I'm assuming is what highlighted in green, and within the packet? Is that right?
No, I don't see any.
Like.
No. Can you hear that?
Like where does it change before and after?
Right under Phase 11. If you can see Phase 11, which is at the intersection of Delmar and Lot 20. It is the sort of horizontal tract, very, very thin, sort of under Phase 11.
Can we put it up here?
Certainly. Oh, I see it.
With, uh.
You see, I was thinking over here where the golf, yeah, stuff was at.
That's actually the golfing, but the change is around right here.
Okay.
Right there, there.
Alright, so this is where the change is happening?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have?
And again, the calculation.
That's correct.
Further downstream, I guess closer to Phase 15 is where the, uh, the capacity exists.
Right, it's my chair, I believe it's gonna be in Phase 11. I mean, the, the applicant is here.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, where are you?
Do, do we have any comments of the engineer?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Sergio Narváez with Premier Engineering. Good evening, Mr. Madam Chairman, Madam Chair of the Commission. Yeah, uh, we, we are submitting this master plan, it's just an amendment of the master plan, Mr. Gutierrez. It's, it's just, uh, to, to make an update for that piece of land and like Mr. Withoutus said, we run the calculations present to Engineering Department to accommodate the runoff, the existing and the, the pre and post development runoff. So we are, we are sure that we are okay in that.
In the existing.
Modifications. Yes, sir.
Mr. Navarro, you have a comment?
Just, just an observation, my name is Orlando Navarro for the record. The, the line that's on the side, that's their property line, it runs like that, the right there, that's the property line. And they have a road that's coming in outside of their property. We, uh, I believe that, that's Kilim property, right?
Yeah.
So we don't have a design and I'm just, we, we don't have a design for that road to go like that and to curve and to make that connection. So what I'm assuming you're voting on is only within their.
Which road are you referring to?
Which road are you referring to? What curve?
Outside the property.
Is it, is it identified as one, as a phase here, or?
No, I just, I just see this road right here.
Is it the road immediately south of the, the track in question?
I don't know, I just saw it for the first time. As long as the approval is for their property and not necessary for anything outside their property, right?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have something adjacent to that, or what?
Oh, I see, so you're talking, if I may, you're talking at the intersection of Casa Verde and, uh, the, the extension of University, is that what you're referring to?
Let me go back, sorry.
Let me, let me. Is that already right there, this? Is that there?
Oh, oh, that this?
Cause it's outside the property, it's property. So this, this is our property. So they're approving everything inside the black. Right, they're, they're approving everything inside the black. So that's just their.
So quick question, so when the, when the city actually looked at this to approve it, they did not look at the, everything around it to see, make sure that every, one side connected to the other side?
So at that point, it is connected.
Does it make a difference?
Good, but it will only, Madam Chair, on their, when they bring in a plat, when either side brings in a plat, they'll be responsible for their own.
So that's University?
Yeah, it's already built, stormwater.
Okay, it's University, so we're okay.
It's already built.
Okay, okay, so.
Motion, motion to approve, subject to comments.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
B, 7B, review and consideration of the Kilim East Industrial Park master plan. The intent is industrial, commercial, and residential.
Yes, for the record, the applicant is Kilim Development, engineers, Miscuit Engineering, proposed use is industrial, commercial, and residential. The zoning for the seven lot, seven unit development is M1 and R1. Location view. Aerial view. Proposed master plan. Staff comments planning. Fire. And traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Any comments from the engineer?
I do have some, I do have some questions for Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
On this master plan. I know it's a, it's a big, uh, plan, kind of encompassing as well as the United Ninth Grade and United High School. And I know within the plan, within this master plan, they, um, you do reference in the master plan zoning, right? Like, there are certain areas within this master plan that references your M1s or a B3s, a B4s, um, to identify, I guess, the uses. For, the only thing for, for, for me is I would, I would prefer that we not put the zoning at this time, at this master, within this master plan, and just leave the description. So if there's an, an area identified as M1, I'd rather leave it as light industrial, just because this isn't a zone case, it's a master plan. And I would think that would be eventually approved by or looked at at council, once they decide, and we recommend. But at this time, I think, um, I don't know, and I don't even know if other master plans I've ever had identified.
They don't go to, master plan stay here.
Okay, we were, we were, Orlando Navarro for the record, Madam Chair, oh, that is basically what's requested at the time of annexation, but.
The zoning has already been determined at an annexation at this point.
But has it, so then this has already been approved by council?
It's slightly different what's shown on the sketch. It, it's following the boundaries, but just to confirm the, I could, actually I could put it up.
So zoning can be approved during the annexation?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause at the end of the day, it's. Our recommendation, their final statement.
But the master. Usually the annexations come in as agriculture, right?
No, no, previously, many, many, many years ago.
Months ago, yeah.
They typically would come in as R1 unless the applicant asked for an alternate zoning and then they had six months from the time of annexation to also ask for zone change at no cost. And now they are, they are asking for their zonings. So they're, they're typically coming in with, with their preferred zoning at the time of annexation.
Is it a requirement of the ordinance to identify within the master plan, your, your zoning?
No, I believe not.
So it's not required, right?
It is not required.
Now, so we don't have to put it on here?
They can't, they, it's recommended to identify the land uses, but zoning specific?
No.
So that, I think this will help you out. That's the, according to Rafa, that's the, the zones. Right. So the exhibit that, that you looked at, that has a B4 and an R1 and everything.
Right.
It's actually incorrect, that's the correct one.
Right, so this is.
I think that helps you.
Right, right. So that doesn't reference what we have in our packet?
No.
No, cause you have B3s and other uses, not that specific annexation.
Right, to give you a little bit of background, there was a lot of concern, we brought in the annexation from the P&amp;Z. And we took the recommendation from P&amp;Z to council and council agreed with the P&amp;Z recommendation. And that is why council did approve the R1 up here, the B3, to provide a definite buffer from the school tracks and then the M1 for the back.
Right, but, but in the packet that we received, we have B3 along the, the top part of that develop, future development, and then we have some.
Right, so, so you, you are on track, the recommendation then would be definitely for them to, just as part of the motion, for them to submit an amendment of the master plan, but remove the zoning, only put the classification as in commercial, residential, or industrial.
Right, or, or if they have plans to not.
To reflect that.
Right, or just not add the zoning to the master plan and just leave it at whatever intent you may have.
Madam Chair, my only question is, has the zone been granted already?
Like that?
Yes.
So it's just incorrect the way we submitted.
And you're gonna sub, so you'll be submitting an amendment at some point, or request for zone change at some point?
This is the, this is the current zoning today?
In, in the future. We, we don't see plans of doing anything to the east, so we're okay at this time, but we will get the exhibit cleaned up and submitted.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I apologize for that.
So, uh, yeah, I would make a recommendation that we not include the zoning within this master plan, um, at this time, like, and just put in the description of the, the intended uses.
Let me take it off.
Madam Chair, I would like to, to ask if everyone could, um, go to the traffic safety comments. Because I'm requesting to see if possible, if we can strike items 1, 2, and 3. Item number 1, identify existing and proposed streets of the residential area to provide better comments. And item 3 says submit a TIA, so we did submit a TIA.
That's correct.
And so that usually takes care of the reasoning for the streets. Now, I can't tell you if safety reviewed the TIA, but we did have a, a private company do a TIA and submit to show volumes for the traffic department. So I think that's something that, um, would answer 1, if I'm correct in saying that.
So through the annexation process, it's submitted TIA, which was provided to the traffic department. And we will, I will, we'll definitely follow up to make sure.
And, and even in the future, when we do plat, we're gonna have to put the layout in there, so there's still time for the city to review that. But just for, for, for right now, we'd like to remove those 2, 1 and 3. And then item number 2, it says, uh, the right-of-way as per Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan. Our right-of-way width is the, the width that, that, um, there's no issue with the width, we meet the width. But the Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan is not accepted by the city.
Adopted.
It's not adopted by the city. But we, we will follow traffic, but we just don't wanna be specific to Viva Laredo. But we will deal with, uh, engineering to see how they wanna do this, the design.
So if we reword, um, the right-of-way as per the thoroughfare plan?
Well, we, the thoroughfare plan, we put all the roads, the main roads, right? But, um.
So your, your question, if, just for clarification, is you're talking about the cross-sections?
The cross-sections. The cross-sections because this is M1 and the cross-sections have bike lanes and, you know, walking lanes. If they want that, we can do that, cause we do have the right-of-way. But there have been times where they say no, just put 12 feet of sidewalk, or they, they change it up. So if we're locked into this, we're locked into it, and I'd rather get with traffic and engineering to determine what they wanna do there. Cause there will be 18-wheeler traffic out here. That's what I'm asking, I mean, we're still gonna meet the width and we're putting in turning lanes and different things like that, but.
So, Madam Chair, it's with the Viva Laredo comp plan isn't, hasn't been adopted.
It's adopted by resolution.
By resolution, so it is adopted.
Yes.
And thoroughfare plan within it as well.
The cross-sections?
Not the cross-sections.
The cross-sections are adopted as well.
Adopted as well. Well, that's gonna be, I mean, we're fine with that, but bike lanes and, and stuff, walking trails and stuff like that, warehouse area?
About 2018?
2017.
2017? The comp plan?
2017, which got, which has, which has the cross-sections for the.
I think with the thoroughfare plan.
Yeah.
The thoroughfare plan, which we, we.
The thoroughfare plan, yes, but not the Viva Laredo.
You're considering, you're considering the cross-sections.
Cross-sections. But again, has the comp plan been adopted?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I, I see he has shaking no there, so. The Viva Laredo comp plan, there's a comp plan that exists today.
Right.
There's one that's on the shelf that's called the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan. That hasn't.
Has not been adopted.
No, but we do have a comprehensive plan that gets reviewed every year, but it's not that specific one. Did I say that right?
I honestly don't know. The comp plan that was, that was, we had a previous comprehensive plan that, that lasted for however many years, 30 years, or whenever it was. And then it was revised, revised, and that's the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan.
To my knowledge.
That's it.
And that showed.
Approved, approved?
Yeah, well, it was adopted by resolution.
And that shows the cross-sections for those. Is Madam Chair?
Comprehensive plan, are you talking about Recode? No, are you talking about Recode or the comprehensive plan? Recode is still under review and development, the comprehensive plan was adopted in 20, or adopted by resolution in 2017.
So the cross-sections that are available to, for design are?
In the comprehensive plan, in the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan.
I would also say though, you have an updated thoroughfare plan.
Yes.
Nothing to do with Viva.
That's absolutely. The Viva Laredo includes the thoroughfare plan, which is updated, the comp plan is reapproved and updated every. Can you come? Nancy?
Mr. Nancy.
Mr. Porras.
Porras Engineer. Can you state your name?
Wayne Nance with Porras Engineering.
Yes.
Uh, all I was saying is that, and I'm clarifying with staff, is that it's a strange combination of roids. Yes, Viva Laredo did have a comprehensive plan in there, but just the city has also subsequently updated and approved the long-range thoroughfare plan. We don't call it Viva, it's just the long-range thoroughfare plan.
Well, the long-range thoroughfare plan is part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
It is part of it.
Okay.
So it's, it's within it. So when we update the thoroughfare plan.
Updated thorough, whenever I see it on, online.
It, it's an appendix of, like, if you, if you look at the resolution, it's an appendix of the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan. So even though, even though the comprehensive plan was adopted versus 2017, this is an appendix of it, so that appendix gets updated. But all the cross-sections and all that, that stays from 2017 forward.
I understand, I also, for what it's worth, not gonna even go there with this meeting, I know that that is, uh, it is, it is.
Prepin?
No, the, the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan is used selectively because some areas don't work. They, they, they don't work in the Engineering Department knows that. Uh, and what I'm speaking, so with, with Orlando's talking to, you, you do not want bike lanes in a, in a.
18-wheel.
Industrial area, or they, they die and they, they get crunched. And so we, we know better than that, we, we won't use that, so I understand where he's going and, uh, but that's it. I don't have anything else, this is, yeah.
And, and just for clarification, is that what the city's asking for in this comment? Like, on the, on that comment to, to do that for, I guess it was comment, what comment, number was it, number 2?
Yes.
Right-of-way as per.
The thoroughfare plan.
Like what would that be?
And it says, uh, the, I think the concern is shall be full intersection, so I think that's where your, your concern is.
And the full intersection.
That was gonna be, that was gonna be another.
So a full intersection would be what Rafa like?
So are we still gonna get with traffic? Yes, are we gonna get with engineering? Yes, and then we, based on the discussion, we'll, we'll determine. It's, I'm not coming in here to ask for a narrower road or anything like that, the road is, the width that it's supposed to be. It's on the side, how they want it designed, do they want? Because the Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan does have bike lanes and stuff like that in there, and some occasions they say, no, we don't, we want that there because of, for safety, whatever.
And is that what you think they're asking of you in this comment, Mr. Navarro?
I'm thinking that's where we're going with that. I mean, at the end of the day, if we have to put it, but we'd like at least a chance to talk to Engineering to see if that's what they want, or if they wanna change it, we can change it. But I'm, my concern, if you keep it specific to this, it might not give them the ability to, because you're gonna approve it, it might not give the ability for them to change. They're gonna, they're gonna say, well, we only have from the Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan.
Yes, because the master plans are this day or from here, right?
That, that's, that's all, I don't wanna get locked in. I do have a question for staff in terms of procedure. Eventually, he'll have to present a plat, and that's where we adjudicate this issue to its full extent. At that point, design comes into play. And so they'll get another bite at the apple then, so do we need to keep it here? I mean, he's still, staff and Engineering, everyone will get another bite at that apple at that time.
So the Engineering, I mean, the Engineering design elements are handled at one-stop shop. But again, the concern is, and to follow what is in the Viva Laredo, and that's, it sets forth the cross-sections for these roadways.
But you would set that, well, that forward in the plat, your plat reference. And it's up for traffic here? So, and this is traffic's comments, right? Yeah, that's the tough part about it, right? If, if traffic is asking of this of. So I'm, I'm reading into this comment, you know, because we don't have more information, so I'm just like, if we take it out, and let's say I come in for plating. At that time, when I go to Engineering, Engineering's gonna, you know, tell me what the design's gonna be.
Regardless of whether.
Talk it out.
Madam Chair, regardless of whether it's here in the, in the master plan or. It's, it's gonna be in the, in the plat, plat requirements, Engineering's gonna request it of it.
And in the one-stop shop, anyway.
And at the one-stop.
Yeah.
We'll go through preliminary again, traffic will look at it again, then we'll go to one-stop shop, they'll look at it. So no need for it to be here, it, it, it won't cause any harm if it's not here. Y'all still have another opportunity to add that comment at plat or at one-stop.
They're bringing in both a master plan and they're bringing in a phase today.
A master plan and a phase?
Yes, so then the phase or.
Is it the next item? No.
Yes, it's, um.
It's the C?
No, pardon me, it is item.
8.
8C.
8C?
So they're bringing in, no, I'm sorry.
8A.
8A, sorry, correct.
And here's the tough part, I think, if you go on the aerial and you go into Google Maps and you look at East Point, there is a lot of trucks on the side of the road, parked on the side of the road, like, as parking.
Yeah.
Like, oh, you know, so one of the concerns I thought is, once this opens up, you know, we're gonna have traffic there, are we still gonna allow those trucks to park off of the East Point Drive?
Park there right now.
I shouldn't.
They shouldn't.
They, they should, well, enforcement is another thing.
Right, but, but they are if you.
They do because it deadens to.
Yeah, so there's a lot of traffic, trucks on it, and I would think if we're gonna do something like Mr. Navarro describing and doing, you know, there, there would be a concern, cause there already are 18-wheelers parked along East Point Drive. If this was residential, I wouldn't have any problem with it, we, we understand residential near schools, stuff like that, all that, I, I get. But this is M1, so we gotta be careful.
But what, are, are, are you, is there gonna be a full intersection to, for 35 yet in that master plan?
Okay, so the second, the second statement or the second sentence, um, we're gonna have a full intersection on our property.
Yeah.
We don't own land all the way to I-35. We don't have any permits to connect to 35 or go over the railroad truck.
Okay.
If that happens and they bring it to us, obviously we'll connect. But on our property, it will have a full intersection, lights, the.
Which is United and McPherson.
Correct.
United and McPherson.
And already, this is where another question comes up, right? If we're connecting eventually United Avenue and Hook 'em Horns, eventually they're gonna connect to, uh, to the Kilim Industrial Park. There, I hope, I'm hoping there's a transition that you guys are thinking of to do, uh, to help not, we would hate for, for the residential side, which is the sunny side little side, to start utilizing this area to come, uh, south. Or having the industrial park traffic going into the school side. We don't want it to go that way. Right, we don't want traffic to go this way, especially 18-wheelers.
And maybe that's traffic's concern right there. And that's why they're implementing the, the thoroughfare.
The Viva.
That was adopted in 2007.
So it, that's why it's a big intersection, I understand it, I know there's gonna be a lot of traffic as well. The hope is that you guys recognize that we want that industrial traffic to move down East Point and I guess McPherson to grab the loop. The idea is to design with turning lanes also, so we don't have to be buying them later. They're gonna be part of the design so that we could, we could have the right turns, uh, like you would see at Delmar and McPherson, something like that, that kind of, that, that's what the intersection's gonna look like in order to help with traffic, to speed up traffic. And they're gonna be wide roads, they're wide, wide road.
Madam Chair, the third concern is not so much the width of the road and all these, it's the addition of the bike lanes that are called.
Now, what that design's gonna look like.
Right, called out for in the comp plan.
So I guess, while we're here, if, excuse me, if we, if we go to Engineering, they insist they want the bike lanes, we understand that, and we can do that. But we also want to discuss it with them and say, hey, this is warehouse traffic and stuff like that. And if that happens and they decide they want us to do it differently, we'll do it differently, we just don't wanna get locked into it. And I'm thinking that saying Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan, the cross-sections, I don't know if it's gonna impact by saying it like that, that we have to do it by the Viva Laredo, uh, cross-sections. Um, and then because like, but like you said, they've changed it in the past.
I don't can believe that there's not one.
Or if it's no big deal. So I, I guess we can, so think about that a little bit as far as, you know, that comment already, and then the other thing is, the way the, these phases are phased in into this master plan, it's kinda just like you had mentioned, or, or we, we talked about, as far as it's thoroughfare roadways, right? Your, your major roadways are within this master plan. So, um, and I'm, and I know that Unit 1 is in the same, uh, agenda later on, that, that 100 acres, uh, is here.
That that hundred acres, uh, is here for us to look at as a preliminary plat. And then in the future, as far as the other phases come in, that we'll look at. But if at any point any other roadways come in, um, would, if you were to put any other roadways, for example, in the in the R one that you have north of, uh, the, uh, the ninth grade, that yellow area, like if you were ever to put roads in that, in this planned, right? Are you gonna have to come back? Are they, is he gonna have to come back every time he puts a roadway within this master plan, other than the ones he's showing?
Right, so in in to amend, let's say in the future, when they do come in with that R one, and obviously there's gonna be some, uh, roads, smaller local streets there, he'll have to amend his master plan at that time and bring in the phase.
The traffic will have to look at it.
Okay. Because it does ask of, in the ordinance, to identify local streets, right?
That is correct.
In the, in the ordinance, right? It asks for extensions of thoroughfares, local streets, and drainage structures.
But I think that one of the things that, that that's always been the issue to put it in there because, so that they could, uh, check the impact of the development on the the master plan for future.
Right.
But now we're, we submitted a TIA for that. So it's kinda like the, in my opinion, that answers the question, because they want a study done. In the past, there was no TIA's submitted, so they needed to see the layouts of what's gonna happen. Where's the traffic gonna come out? Where's the, all that stuff? And here, what we did was, we submit a TIA, we say that this is gonna be residential, which is your most, uh, your busiest kind of impact. And then the TIA kind of goes through a process. So that's where Traffic reviews that. Now, I don't know who's reviewing it.
Right. Or if they were, they're they're private road, private roads, then there's no need to bring this in, right? It was like those private subdivisions that maintain of their own roadways and stuff.
Which we'll be doing.
They wouldn't need to come here.
Um, any more comments or what are the wishes of the commission?
I guess to add before we we do any motions is, I would hope, uh, we would add the, um, the, uh, the removal of the zoning and only utilize the designations of future uses as shown in the annexation, approved annexation.
And and my request would be to remove one, two, and three.
Again, what are the wishes of the commission?
One last question for staff. We'll get another opportunity to address this at the preliminary plat and then again at the plat.
Well, the preliminary plat is is on.
The preliminary plat is right here.
But we'll get another, I mean, it's gonna come back to us at some point. Uh, including the design, the ultimate, the final design of that intersection.
So those design, those designs, pardon me, those designs are, do not come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the planning, when these items get approved, they have, they are to follow what's on the books. And the thoroughfare plan spells out the way the cross-sections are gonna be. So when they submit their engineering review plans after this, after this step, if they get approved, they go to the one-stop shop and engineering reviews compliance with those intersections, or I'm sorry, with those cross-sections.
Again, the, and the cross-sections currently speak to bike trails in an area that could potentially be.
Or is gonna be. That is correct. There are bike lanes in there.
So my motion would be to remove items one, two, and three.
Let's see, with the removal of the zoning.
Yes, and and.
Removing of the zoning.
As amended.
Only utilize the designations of future uses as shown in the approved annexation.
Was it, was it only? One, two, and three?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so you did the motion?
Yes.
A second.
And you did second.
Okay, discussion really quick. So identifying existing and proposed streets of residential area, we we wouldn't need that, right?
No, because it goes through the.
That they're gonna have to come back anyways.
Yes.
If they were to identify any residential local streets.
Exactly.
Right.
Correct.
What are the, the?
Motion, second.
On your favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Could you please, I apologize, can you please confirm who made the motion?
Motion, Mr. Velmares, second, Mr. Garcia.
And I'll, I'll go against it.
You'll vote what? Against? Against, so it's one, two, three, four, five, yeas, and one against. Um, seventeen. Review the revision of the Cuatro Vientos Sur subdivision, Sur, Cuatro Vientos Sur subdivision master plan. The intent is residential, commercial, and multifamily. The purpose of the revision is to provide the lot layout of Phase Twelve, which is no longer designated as a planned unit dev- development.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, for the record, the applicant is for F Holdings, engineers Poros, Nance Engineering. Propose use as residential, commercial, family. The zoning for this nine hundred and forty-eight lot development is R one, R one A, R one B, R one M H, F B one and B three. The location view. The aerial view. The revised master plan. Staff comments, planning. Fire. And traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering. We we agree with all the comments, except, um, there's one on traffic that we have to have removed. Uh, it says to connect traffic safety, item number one, connect Bianca Loop to Loop Twenty as per Viva Laredo future thoroughfare plan. For different, for different reasons than before. This was already removed. Uh, as a matter of fact, this commission, uh, I have the meeting minutes from this commission on, uh, August third, two thousand twenty-three. We removed Bianca. It it can't do it. It's, the the great separation is is crazy. We took all the departments out, we showed them. I think that the 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 person that made this traffic comment forgot about that and just threw it out there again. But this connection is already been removed. And we're submitting this master plan as to take care of some smaller details within it about a P U D changing to an R one B. This, we're not trying to reintroduce this, and I don't think staff wants, they're trying to, I think it was inadvertently left in. And I have the meeting minutes here, I can leave them with staff, and they're aware of this. Uh, so we're just basically removing the same comment that we struck last year.
That's because Bianca deadens into another residential face that you're gonna build, right?
Yes, and.
It 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 doesn't connect to the loop.
And it can't connect.
It can't.
Did text not not have the connection, but it's it's, it's in the thoroughfare plan? This roadway was?
It was previously in the thoroughfare plan, but this board took it off.
Also, it's not even in the thoroughfare plan either.
It shouldn't be in the thoroughfare plan anymore. It should not be. It's hard to tell, there's that last little niche, sometimes you can't see it.
Was it one of those ones we, we did just recently? That was not.
This was last year.
So anyway, that, the only traffic item number one, the rest of the comments were fine. Thank you.
Like his staff, is that, is that right? Like, it's not in the thoroughfare plan? It's not? Texton's not gonna connect this roadway or need this roadway?
Well, first of all, he is correct. When the item did come, was presented, it wasn't removed in the minutes. Uh, it is currently in our thoroughfare plan, but again, P and Z did remove it from the, by, they took action to remove it.
Was your Phase Eight, or was it Eight, Phase Eight approved already?
It was. It was as a P U D, and then the purpose of this master plan is simply because we're not gonna use a P U D, uh, staff recommended. It's gonna be just a normal use. So that's all we're really clarifying here.
Okay.
We're not trying to go back to the start.
And the zoning required for what you're going to do now is what?
Uh, I think an R one B, I think.
It it needs to be an R one B.
If we need a, and that might be one of our comments, if we need an R one, if we need a zone change, yeah, it's it's one of the comments by.
It mentions that you're gonna need, it just didn't say what, what, which.
I'm sorry, it's R one B.
Okay.
And so, yes, we we agree with the comment that a zone change will be required.
Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the removal of traffic safety comment number one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Velmares. All in favor?
All in.
Thank you.
Consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Eight A, preliminary consideration of the plat of Lot One, Block One, Killam East Industrial Park, Unit One. The intent is industrial.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, for the record, the applicant is Killam Development, uh, engineers Mesquite Engineering. Uh, propose use as industrial. The zoning for this one lot development is M one. Location view. Aerial view. Proposed plat. Staff comments, planning, fire, and traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, Orlando Navarro, for the record. Once again, I I come before you, say, uh, we concur with comments, uh, traffic safety, that that would be the three that I'd like to get, um, removed if possible, if you all would consider that. Once again, this is the preliminary. We will be going to one-stop shop with full designs. At that time, Traffic, uh, and Engineering will be able to, um, review this and then determine what they want us to do, and then we can do it. Um, the TIA was submitted already, so that's, that's already in hand. Um, and then the revised master plan, we're not sure what that comment is.
No, what that?
It was the same comment as the one before.
Right, so I don't think they were brought out, they were just put in there because, I mean, I have a note next to it, I'm not sure what they wanted us to revise in the master plan. Um, and this is preliminary consideration, it's not the master plan. So I got a funny feeling it was just copied over.
Oh, so, yeah, I don't think this is, right? I guess comment number one, Orly is, this doesn't include that in this preliminary plat, right?
I didn't want it to be included in there.
No, no, I'm saying like, it's not part of the plan. Not United and McPherson.
But we're only doing Phase One.
Right. It's Lot One, Block One only.
It includes the road, but it it stops at the property line. That's it. It doesn't connect. And the reason it doesn't connect is we still have to do, uh, possibly a toll mark in the area.
You know, that that's the tough part. I would hope staff, you know, because with Mr. I don't, Mr. Navarro's mentioning makes sense as far as why you wouldn't want that type of roadway, but at the end of the day, Traffic is making a comment here, um, saying they need it. And if a reason is a safety concern, they're not here to be able to let us know what that is, right? So, you know, that's, that's the tough part about this, um, this plat.
What what ends up happening is we would, we would go to them, kind of explain our, what we think the safety issues would be. At the end of the day, if traffic engineering requires to do it, we have to do it, or we wouldn't get our, we wouldn't be able to come back for finals, so we would be.
Right.
We'd be locked there, so.
And and that's, um, then the absence of the chair, uh, staff, that would be, again, an opportunity for staff to say, this is something we absolutely need, and in that plating process, he would be required to put those items in.
But, you know, sometimes, but sometimes, you know, and I'm seeking for the traffic guard, but I would sometimes think that they would say, well, it's removed, so. We're not gonna address that.
They'll, they'll look at it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, cool. And then, uh, you already submitted the TIA, right?
Yes, sir.
So in other words, uh, item two is moved, that you've already submitted, it's done. And again, third, the the third item, not sure why it's there.
Right.
So in the absence of the chair and vice chair, what wish do you commission?
You got to vote for your chairman.
So, do we have enough for?
Yeah, yeah. Do the motion.
Alright, so what's the wishes of the ca, of the commission?
To close and recommend.
Just, motion to approve, I guess, I think the motion.
Motion to approve and remove, uh, traffic one, two, and three.
So I have a motion to approve, subject to the comments and removal of items one, two, and three, the traffic safety comments.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, six, five, I say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
A B. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Cuatro Vientos Sur subdivision, Phase Twelve. The intent is residential.
So for the record, the applicant is, uh, for F Holdings, engineers Poros, Nance Engineering. Propose use as residential. The phone, the zoning for this sixty-seven lot development is R one. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. Fire. And traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering, um, I guess you probably know where I'm going. Uh, we agree with all the comments, except that we need the, uh, traffic safety, I, item number one, stricken. Requesting the connection of Bianca to Loop Twenty. And other than that, we agree with all the comments.
Motion to approve, subject to comment, and removing a, uh, comment number one of the traffic comment. Of the connection of Bianca.
Second.
But we need one more?
Oh, yeah. We got a motion in the second, but we're gonna wait.
We we need, uh, the.
An aye, uh, one more, an agreement.
The agreement.
Hold on, Mr. Lee.
Y'all hold those thoughts. Here we go.
Now, here, there we go.
They have a.
They have a, a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Motion passes. Eight, uh, C. Eight C, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot One and Lot Two. Block One, Killam Industrial Park, Unit Eleven into Lot One A and Lot Two A, Killam Industrial Park, Unit Nineteen, the intent is industrial.
Yes, for the record, the applicant is R K Lan, engineers of Peewa Consulting, propose use as industrial. The zoning for this two lot development is M one. Location view. Aerial view. As platted and the proposed replat. Staff comments, planning. The traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, my name is Oscar Ramirez, uh, with Peewa Consulting. We concur with the comments. Any questions?
Does the commission have any questions?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For clarifications, who made the second?
The second?
Mr. Navarro.
Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
B. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Loma Verano subdivision, the intent is residential.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, the applicant is Summers Family Partnership, engineers Poros, Nance Engineering, propose use as residential. The zoning for this eighty-seven lot development is R one. Location view. Aerial view. Uh, the proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. And fire. And the proposed motion.
Good afternoon, Wayne Nance with Poros Engineering. Again, we agree with all, uh, staff comments for this one. Here for any questions?
What are the wishes of the commission?
A motion to approve, subject to comments?
Second by Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Nine A. Preliminary consideration. Reconsideration of the following preliminary flats and preliminary replats. Nine A, pre- preliminary reconsideration of the plat of the Coes at Winfield, Phase Four B. The intent is residential. The purpose of this reconsider, reconsideration is to reduce the front yard setback line for lots thirty-nine through forty-six, Block Two, and add a twenty-foot-wide off-site drainage easement.
Yes, uh, for the record, the applicant is Chaco Lan Sales, engineer is Mesquite Engineering, propose use as residential. The zoning for this ninety-six lot development is R one. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed plat. Staff comments, planning. Traffic. And the proposed motion.
Do we have the engineer?
Good evening, uh, for the record, Rob Morades, representing mosquito engineering, and, uh, we can make sure we'll have comments.
A motion to approve, subject to comments.
Second.
The second is a then.
Second?
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Casares. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you.
If no objections or comments, may I have a motion to take items together? Um, which one?
Ten A.
Uh, ten A, B, C?
So moved, Madam Chair, taken.
I'll, I'll take.
Aye.
Can you read it?
Yes, of course, Madam Chair, uh, for the record, uh, final consideration of the replat of Lot thirteen, Block one, San Isidro Northeast, Las Palmas subdivision phase two, into lots thirteen A, thirteen B, thirteen C, thirteen B, thirteen E, Block one, San Isidro Northeast, Las Palmas subdivision phase two approved. Final consideration of replat of lots one eight one and Lot two B, Block one, Lado Country Club, Clubhouse plat, and Lot twenty A, Block four, Deer Ridge subdivision phase two, Quill Run, approved. And, uh, final consideration of the plat of Southeast Commercial subdivision phase two at Buena Vista Ranch, approved.
Have a motion to approve the items?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Eleven, consideration of model subdivision compliance. Consideration of model rules subdivision compliance of the plat of Copper Creek subdivision phase five, the intent is residential.
Motion to approve. Second.
Already done, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adjourn? This is a staff presentation, but.
Well, I, I'd make a motion, I would rather have all the staff members, I, I just looked at it, uh, and it's very good information. And I would, I would hate for those folks that are not here not to be able to listen to this presentation, so I would recommend we postpone until, I'm sorry, next meeting.
If, if, uh, if we may, we'd, we'd prefer to bring it back to the second meeting, the, sort of the meeting that's not so zone case heavy. Um, so that we can spend a little bit more time on November. Uh, yes, usually it's the first meeting of the month.
Of the, of the month.
Mm-hmm, okay. So if that, if that's amenable to the, to the commission.
So you wanna do the motion?
Yeah, motion to postpone for the first week of November meeting, uh, second.
No, the pen and ticket?
Yeah, that's.
All in favor?
Aye, I need it there.
And I guess before we postpone, quick, I'd like, I don't know if we, out of all the departments that are here, and we thank fire for always being here, you know, um, and the rest of you guys, you know, I think traffic's a really big deal, they're making a lot of comments, it's tough for us, we have a lot of questions, I know you guys are tied up too. So, you know, I don't know if I can make it a recommendation that the next meetings that we have, the traffic department.
Who do, who do we, do we write a letter or something? We've always had the same issue.
When the commission expresses its desires, we do pass along those, those desires to the, to management and to our colleagues in the other departments.
I'd like to make it a motion.
I'd like to second that, but all departments that make comments should be here.
And utilities.
amended all, anyone who makes a comment, that they should be here.
Five comments.
We, I mean, we can, we can pass along that, that, uh, that request, um, to management and to our brothers in our other departments.
I recommend that you, that everybody represents somebody on the, on the council.
And let them know.
We will too.
Save, save a conversation with the council member?
Yes.
But, but I, I really think we should do it, by.
With teeth?
No, no, with, with, with a letter, you know, like, we, we can all speak and tell our, our appointee, but las palabras se las lleva el viento, like.
Oh, cuz there's no enforcement for it.
That, that's right, there's no enforcement, so maybe the letter has to be sent to Neb or like, you know, or someone that could really get them here, because I know you do, uh, do the part in, in reminding them, and we have a P and Z meeting and everything, and like Mr. Dominguez is here all the time, right? He, he, he's here and all of them should be here. Like, if you put, um, a comment, like, what we were speaking to, like, speaking from or for the, the roads, was traffic needs to be here. And also utilities, when there's, when there's something with utilities, who's gonna know? But.
And it was, I'd certainly be the director, but a representative or someone from that department, I mean, whoever, just someone.
Speak to the comments that are on there. I'm sure that the other thing, you know, that we've always, you know, engineers and those that represent the developers, when there are objections to items that you all have put on to these agendas or these, uh, plats and master plans, they show up to fight their case.
Right, that's exactly right.
Similarly, staff.
They were here to, yeah, they were here to ask for more money, but they were not here to answer questions.
Yeah, um, again.
She did what it is.
We will definitely, uh, uphold.
Give me money, but it won't ever work.
That's my, that's our motion.
Motion is second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I've.
Just to be clear, the directive or the, it, it must come from management?
It must come from management, so that's.
Yeah, because management directs staff.
Of course, that's why I, I want to see, or, I'm, I'm gonna ask around what we can do, maybe a letter or, and signed by all of us or petitioned by all of us towards them, because it is very important, like, like, basically also for the, for the plats or the, or the, I forgot the name.
Master plan.
The master plans, the master plans, they stay with us and, and that's it. So how are we going to be able to answer or do a correct, uh?
Assessment.
Assessment if traffic, if utilities, if all of the people that are.
We, we completely understand and will do our part to transmit those, your, uh, thoughts and concerns to management and to the rest of the departments.
Today, we could have ruled better, but we didn't, and that, that should be the, the message. We, we, we can have the, the.
And do they show up for city council, the representatives?
Ah, claro.
Right?
They should, they should.
Yes.
Mire vengo aqui, the, uh, citizens common, eh, no, just kidding, just kidding.
Motion to close.
All in favor? Adhere.